To order, Madam Clark.
Here.
Mr. Kader.
Here.
Ms. Egan.
Here.
Ms. Hazard.
Here.
Ms. Healy.
Here.
Mr. McCosker.
Here.
Ms. Young.
Here.
Thank you. Dr. Kizner, presentation of superintendent's FY '20 spending request.
All right, thank you. Knowing I have three minutes, I will make sure I get right to it. Okay. So I first thank you for this opportunity. Officially or formally, I worked about two months on the budget. But truthfully, the day I started is when I worked on the budget. As I walked around the schools, talked to people, visited classrooms, had discussions with different stakeholders throughout the community, formal discussions at different advisory meetings. And also, just so you know how, at least I did it, which is probably not greatly different than how it was done in the past, is that there were representatives from the elementary, middle, and high school principals. They all met, they submitted their recommendation. We met with the representatives. I met with all of the account managers. Met with some of them a few times to better understand their requests, discuss their priorities, and focus on clarity of how the budget was going to improve student learning. And you're going to see a little later the sequence that I took to get to the budget that you're going to be presented. All right, so the goals and priorities, these will look very familiar to you. I tried as much as possible to align the school board goals and priorities with the priorities that I have submitted as a budget request. There will be some expansion, maybe some slight modifications. But overall, I hope as we finish this presentation, that you'll see some alignment with your goals and the budget. So the superintendent's budget expectations, again, I'm going to get into much greater detail, is staff compensation, again, to attract, retain, and develop the Stafford workforce, promote a positive learning experience for every child, ensure equity and excellence, and expand learning opportunities. I also make it clear that the budget has to be flexible. The day the budget is finally adopted is a day, in a sense, the budget changes. Because we're talking about children. So we could have a child or a group of children that move into our community that need a special services of some sort, that maybe we did not anticipate in December of 2018. Because the budget that you will eventually approve goes from July 1 of 19 to June of 2020. So budgets have to be flexible. And not everything can be funded, and not everything can be funded at the requested levels. And I will show you the requested level to the final level, okay? And on Saturday, I'm going to provide you, you'll get all the budget documents and everything for Saturday's work session. You will see every single request that I received, okay? So you'll have a clear understanding of what people ask for. To address growth, looked at class size, protect and enhance health, physical assets, close achievement gaps by supporting targeted interventions. You had a little presentation last week. To meet the required needs of children with disabilities. So I'm going to walk you through tonight a lot of data. And the reason I want to do that is because I could get very, I could be very comfortable talking about the passion, emotional side of teaching and learning. But I think it's also important to understand what's driving the budget. And a lot of what's driving the budget is facts that can't be denied, okay? And they could all be reference if people are looking for it. Support the needs of children with disabilities, strengthen administrative building support, continue supporting the school board staffing initiatives, address compensation study recommendations, provide more targeted professional development. And funds, and Chris and I have been working on different formulas to make sure that funds are distributed around students' needs and equity, okay? I want to just touch quickly on the professional development component. I have always said, and I've always believed, if you do it correctly, if you don't do it correctly, it's not effective. But if you look at professional development in the business world, often it would be called a research and design, research and development. If you look at how we improve student learning to meet the needs of our students today and tomorrow, we have to be prepared to invest in our staff so they have the skills and tools and resources to be effective. And there's no question, when you take a look at Stafford 10, 15 years ago, to where we are today, there are changes, you know that. But sometimes we tend to forget that our student population in 1920 looks, you know what, I would use the word significantly different from 1999 to 2000. First, the focus on academic, social, emotional needs of all children is the first and foremost what's driving on this budget. Some of those pictures you might recognize because they were on some of our trips when we went to visit the buildings. All right, state of the division. Now, I just want to mention something that I, is great. All our schools are fully accredited. So I want to applaud your effort and all of our staff and parents. But I also want to be honest about that, okay? So school divisions are not accredited, schools are accredited. Ninety-two percent of the schools in Virginia are accredited, okay? And I bring that up because sometimes I hear, well, our budget is already meeting all the needs of our children, all our schools are accredited. And, which is true. But it's a lot more than just accreditation. And then the other thing that I'm hoping you're aware of, the entire accreditation system has completely changed. This year, every school division was given an option. You could continue on your old accreditation system, or you could start the new accreditation system. And you selected to the one that was the most advantageous for your school. Next year, that option is not available. So now, how we're going to be assessed, how we're going to be evaluated, all 133 school systems, is looking at growth of individual subgroups, and also looking at other indicators like attendance, like dropout, like discipline, and so on. So whatever we did up to this point, let's celebrate, let's be happy. But I could also tell you, without getting to specifics tonight, we have some schools in Stafford. So the new system is basically a 1, 2, 3, or green, yellow, red system. We have some schools that I would suggest, if we don't change the trajectory, they may not meet what the accreditation as we have known it in the past. And I think our budget begins a very serious discussion on how we make the changes for that to occur. Other things that we should be proud of, of course, is our dropout rate is better than the state average. Our on-time graduation rate is better than the state average. You put in a K-12 improvement model with gold, measurable goals. We have over 4,000 students getting credential, CTE credentials. And of course, you know, we've had teacher, one of the state teachers of the year, and we had a Washington Post principal of the year. So we have a lot to celebrate. So other things, we made some improvements on technology, we have computer upgrades. That is an example of where equity has to be looked at. We sat in this room a couple of months ago with all the PTO leaders and PTA leaders, and we heard firsthand, which is absolutely accurate, that in certain schools, based on the ability of PTOs to raise money, they have a different level of technology than maybe some others. And that should not be the way we operate as a school system. So we are working with our new technology director and finance and instructional staff on how we could make, how that discontinues. How technology is based on the learning needs of children, not the ability to raise funds. Again, I won't take the time to read all this because I know you could read it. But you see that we have a lot to be happy with. So let's take a snapshot in time where we were in 2009. Our enrollment, you know, over 26,000. This year, our ADM projection is, so this does not include preschool, okay? Our ADM projection is 28,934. We feel pretty comfortable at this point that we're going to reach that projection. And next year, we're projecting, this is ADM, which is different than enrollment, okay? We're projecting 29,351. That is a, from 2009 to 2018, we went up 2,137 students, which is a little bit over 8%. So you're going to see, because this is just the beginning of some of the data to help better understand my budget request to the school board. Again, some of you have seen this before, this was discussed in Fab. So we're taking the position that, and I'll show you data in a few minutes, but you have already seen, that when teachers leave Stafford, truthfully, they're really just going mainly to two different school divisions, Prince William and Spotsylvania County. We took a look at where they've been go, within 60 miles. If they go further than 60 miles, it's often a life change, a family job has changed. They may be, you know, just moved for other reasons. But when you look at where they've gone in 60 miles, the top bar, of course, represents Spotsylvania. The middle bar represents the average, I mean, I'm sorry, the top bar represents Prince William. The middle bar represents an average of Prince William and Spotsylvania. The bottom bar kind of merges. But what you could see at the bottom bar is at towards the latter part of the scale, Spotsylvania actually begins to pull ahead of Stafford. Now, I will tell you, and I have said this publicly and privately to people, I'm not here to race to compete with Prince William. That's just realistically, Prince William, not only that scale higher than ours, but they have a scale which you're aware of that is 30 years. We are at 37, 38 years to get to the top, and Prince William would get to 30. But I think, I feel strongly that we want to acknowledge and recognize the profession and the hard work of a lot of our teachers. That's why they deserve better raises than what I think we've been able to do in the past. So where have our teachers gone? Again, you see the 1718, the 1617 data. And that just again highlights that the two school systems, I chose to leave Fairfax out of it. But if we put Fairfax in it, you would also see that they would be higher than Stafford. But you get a sense of where they're going, within 60 miles of Stafford County. And again, this is another representation of that same piece of data. So I also wanted to take a look at, because we have a lot of discussions about student-to-teacher ratios. This information you could get off the Department of Ed website. The only thing I want to caution you, the dark line is K seventh grade. The state just basically has elementary and secondary. So if you take a look at our teacher-to-student ratio, and this includes counselors, librarians, art, music, it's not just the classroom teacher. I'm not going to overly interpret this, except to tell you that if you look at the K seventh grade, and I think if we really digged into it, it would probably be driven more by sixth and seventh grade, that, you know, our staff-to-student ratio is higher than our neighboring school divisions. So I bring this slide up not to say anything except to share the information, okay? And the information is that the way we educate a student is is by how much we receive. And then the state has a formula that looks at every school division, and they subtract out capital outlay, and they give you your per pupil expenditure. And the per pupil expenditure, I think, tells a telling story of why we might not be able to do as much as maybe other school divisions are able to do, or what we would like to do. So what you have is our neighboring school systems, and you have the state median and the state average. And if I could just tell you, if we just met the median, just met the median, we would have $21.5 million more in our budget. And if we just worked to be average, and you know how I feel about average, okay? But if we just worked to be average, we would have $47.5 million more in our budget. So one of the things under your goals, under budget, is to work with the board of supervisors on budget clarity, so maybe some budget goals. And I don't think it would be a bad thing over time to have a good conversation with our board of supervisors, to talk about this number, not to suggest that they're not trying to support the school system. They are trying to support the school system. And I believe there's a great interest by all seven members of the board of supervisors to see our school system be the best in the Commonwealth. But for me as superintendent, and to be able to provide, and I'll give you an example, I mentioned this the other night. But I think it's important, and I think it's telltale. Our middle school, I just want to say, because I think, you know, we talk about salaries, but there's also something about the quality of your working condition. So our middle school teachers, I understand it might have been a history, a long time ago, we gave them a choice. But why even have a choice, the schools? That they eat in the cafeteria while they're studentcy. I think for 20, 25 minutes, however long lunch is, we should have cafeteria monitors, wherever the terminology we use in Stafford, and allow these very hardworking professionals to have 20, 25 minutes where they're not hearing the kids they don't have to worry about. They need a, they need a, they don't timeout. And I understand, in one way, you mentioned last meeting, why foreign language discontinued. And we have other, many other examples. So that's why the per pupil expenditure is very important, because that's what we use to educate a child in Stafford, and that's what everyone else use. And just so you know, trying to do two things at once. Out of 133 school system, we ranked 95th in per pupil expenditure, okay? So I think it would be a reasonable goal to try to get least to the middle. And honestly, why not even be better than that? But, so let's take another look at data, things that we've been interested, we've talked about over the course of the last six months, five months. Our bus drivers, you could see the rates there. There's the starting rates compared to some of our neighboring school systems. Bus drivers are not any different to teachers. If they choose to go somewhere else, it's going to be one of these two school divisions. If you take a look at a six and a half hour day, and you could see the numbers, our drivers would be making a little bit under 18,000. In Spotsylvania, they'd be making close to 19,000. And Prince William, they'd be making over 22,000. So what's driving a lot of the budget, besides when I get into salary benefits, but this has to be recognized, is that as our student population increases, so does our population for students with disabilities. And truthfully, we're at about 12%. The state average is about 12%. So the last couple of years, we've actually been below the state average. But just to put it in context, I can't tell you right now exactly what disabilities represent that increase of, you know, over 200, just from one year. But if we just, for a moment, even took a quarter of that, and said they were low incident disabilities, 50, and we have about eight children to a classroom with a paraprofessional, you could see how that, how it multiplies for children with disabilities. To get into more specific, look, these are the categories that we're seeing the greatest growth. So you see children with autism, you see children with emotional disabilities. Other health impairments, generally your children, not all, but children with attention deficit disorder, there's other disabilities also. And then children with learning disabilities. So you get a better sense of not only why these children deserve, but also require specialized instruction and attention, but also that then drives resources, such as occupational therapy, physical therapy, speech and language, and so on. Okay, so I just want to also let you know that this budget is highly dependent on the state budget. And we're using the proposed budget by the governor. And, you know, there's some good news happening there, that you might have read in the paper this morning, that the House, the Appropriation Committee, at least on the salary part of the governor's budget, has voted to support that. So it's still too early, but I want you, like all superintendents, I believe, we go by the latest information we have, in December of 2018, the governor presented his budget. But what you could see again, you know, this is all instructional positions. In Virginia, you know, housing increased. So from FY 2001 to FY 2019, you could see the growth, the compound annual rate of 2.6 versus 3.0 growth. You could see state cuts. We're really not at the level that we were in 2009 in Virginia for supporting education. You could see the average instructional pay in Virginia has grown less than a rate of inflation. Instructional pay has grown at the rate of the CPI. We would have a $62,000 going towards instruction. Now, state aid is very important to us because that's where we get majority of our funding, okay? So that's why it has very important context. Most locality revenue sources have not kept up with inflation and population growth despite median real estate property taxes. So again, the median real estate, real property tax rates increased 17 cents for cities and 12 cents for counties since FY 2009. So the counties are trying as much as possible to make up the difference of where the state has fallen behind. And then you could see again, the slower growth in K-12 funding. The localities for school construction, that again is, you know, pretty much, the state basically puts no money in for school construction. Now, it's important with, because sometimes people get confused when they see the governor's budget of standards of quality. It's the minimum standards of quality. And somewhere between, it's about 60 to 70% that you will see school divisions. And Chris and his team is, are trying to get the exact number, and maybe he already has it, in Stafford. But I will assure you, it'll fall somewhere between 60 and 70% of positions in our county, in our school division, are standard of quality positions. Positions that you are required to have, they're minimum, okay? So when the budget is presented by the governor, and he says that I'm adding 2% more for teacher raises, you understand, I know you understand, sometimes the public doesn't actually grasp this idea. He is speaking about the standard of quality positions. But all school divisions, when they give raises, they give it to all staff. They don't just say those that are standard of quality and those are not. Our composite index is about .34. So another way to look at it, for every dollar required to spend on a SOQ position or program, we get about 66 cents from the state, okay? So it's not even that it's all funded by the state, we get a portion of it. Now, Stafford, every school division, every community exceeds the local required effort. Because again, it's the minimum standards of quality. And I will, I do want to point out that Stafford is at that exceeding 100% of the required local effort. There with 46 other school systems, and then again, you could see how it breaks down. I would just speculate, because we have a low composite index, that it's somewhat, I don't want to use the word easier, but you'll see that those maybe have lower composite index. You could exceed the local required effort at a higher level, just based on what you're required to fund your schools. However, that number doesn't help us educate a child. What helps educate a child is our per pupil expenditure, okay? But I do want to recognize and thank the county because we are at, we are one of those 46 school systems that exceeded by 46%. So what was in the governor's budget, as I already mentioned, 87 million for salary increases. So how it works this year, if that doesn't get approved, last year, you gave about 2.5%. We would have to really average it out. I suspect it will come out higher than 2.5% because you gave some staff higher than that. If this 2%, if this additional 2% is not approved, but just for the simplicity of this conversation, if it was just 2.5%, we would only be required to give a .5% to draw the state's share. If the 2% additional money, then we would have to give at minimum 2.5% to get the 5%. Lyricacy Fund, $80 million for school construction loans, oh please, that's one school, but it's a start. So one of the other things that you'll see in my budget, I really believe this is an issue that is about safety. And let me just be honest with you, we are probably one of the strongest school systems as it goes to security as a physical plant. But I could tell you, my four months here, and this is not unique to Stafford, the safety issues we've been dealing with are our children in the buildings. It's not people coming into the buildings. It's children making threats. It's children, you heard many parents speak up about issues of bullying. It's, it's, safety is knowing that you come to a school and you are free of threat and distraction, and you're not worried about being harmed by others. And what our school system needs to really embrace is having more staff that could work with the social, emotional needs of children. So even before, maybe the governor was following me, even before the governor was working towards improving the ratio, right now at the elementary level, it's one per 500. And over time, next year, his budget has 1 to 375. And the following year, it would reach to 1 to 250 children. One of the middle schools, the other day, was dealing with two children that took a lot of our time because they were struggling, okay? They were very much struggling. And the principal, I felt, did a, and her staff did amazing job addressing it. But I asked a question, like, how many school counselors you have? And it's a middle school, close to 900 children, just two school counselors. That's, that, that was new to me, I just will tell you. So we are, in the budget, you're going to see an investment in the mental health, the emotional needs of our children. And I really believe that falls into a safety component. Again, you could read the rest of the budget. The two big things I just want to point out was the salaries and the school counselors. So what's kind of somewhat interesting, a little different than maybe what I just said earlier, the history in Stafford is a little different on how the state versus the local budget. Actually, in Stafford, the state budget has been a incremental increase of the budget, and the local budget has gone in the opposite direction. So you could see the portion of the school budget from local funds. 2011, it was at 45.2%. You could follow the line, and in 2019, it's 41.7%. So I'm just providing the facts, okay? I'm not judging, I think people could make their own conclusions. But as I just spent 10 minutes talking about the state not contributing, I want to at least recognize that in our community, the state has actually, it's gone up, and the locality has gone down, okay? So the total operating budgets since 2011, again, you could see the increase. This is the budget that you adopted after the board of supervisors has given you your final number. And you could see- And you could see, um, the operating fund expenditures. This is obviously nothing tied with capital. So, let's talk about what I'm presenting. Although that's not already seeing one slight, um, change. I'm recommending five percent for all employees except school administrators and central office administrators. There, I'm seeking three percent. Okay? My preference would be, um, a five percent, but after, um, uh, reducing positions and positions, I felt like I could not reduce any additional positions. So it's, um, and, uh, we'll see this later. This is, um, tier one request, don't get nervous about that, thirty-eight million dollars. That's where I started with all the requests. Okay? All right. So it started at, at thirteen point three nine percent of all the requests I got. You'll see I end at tier seven. Okay? Compensation study, uh, now I understand, compensation study phase one, initially in tier one, was seventy-five thousand. Now that we've had more information, you're gonna see that number's gonna, um, go up. Okay? Other scale adjustments, nurses that have a bachelor's degree and a registered nurse, um, I believe they should be on a teacher's scale. We already have great difficulty attracting RNs, um, but it's a batch, uh, RNs with a bachelor's degree. Referral bonuses, so I've seen this work in school systems, I've been a superintendent where it worked. One, the best way to attract staff is other staff recruiting for you. People graduate at university, they have friends, they've gone to associations, they say, "Hey, Stafford, great place, my school, terrific." You make a, they make a referral, we employ them, we decide a length of time that they have to work for us to be effective, and if they're effective, um, we give the person who referred them a, um, a bonus. Tuition assistance, we want our sta, learning's not just for children, it's for the adults too. And as, um, we ask people to take classes, to be, um, have the knowledge and skills. Um, right now, our tuition reimbursement, um, you know, we do have a tuition reimbursement, but we, we've put some additional money to support that. Okay? So as I mentioned, started at tier one, and you'll see all the tiers, and I end at tier seven. And tier seven looks a lot different than tier one. So here's my request. All right. So we're using ADM of twenty-nine thousand three hundred and fifty-one. State revenue of eleven million six hundred and seventy-nine thousand over this year, which is seven point two three percent. Federal revenue, most of the federal revenue clarity will happen over the summer, but we already have some indication of, of some addition. So we see a hundred and fifteen thousand more. And, um, don't worry, I didn't get to local yet. And then, that's an increase. And then the other revenue that we get for like renting out the buildings and so on, um, about two hundred and fifteen thousand more. State revenue, we're gonna use seventy-five more students than the state is projecting for ADM. We're pretty confident that the state, uh, is lower than what we're anticipating. Our enrollment projection goes up a hundred and fifty, um, more than what the state is saying, so we're gonna go in the middle. Okay? Five percent compensation supplement, funds for additional counselors. Regional special ed funding, let me just touch upon that real quickly. So Stafford does not belong to a regional special ed partnership with any other school divisions. And a lot of school divisions that do not belong to a regional special ed, um, program have raised the concern to the Department of Ed, why are all these school systems getting additional funding and we're educating the same children and, and the costs are the same? Now, I have to tell you, when I was in Harrisonburg, I used to argue the other way, because we had a regional program, said, "Leave us, stop being jealous of us." But the big school, the, the school systems that argued that regional special ed funding should be distributed to all school divisions have won the narrative. So we are anticipating, additional funding doesn't mean anything except we may have to have some memorandums of understanding and with another school division, specifically now we're talking about Spotsylvania, because believe it not, Fredericksburg has one with Prince William, I don't know how we got jumped over. So if we, uh, create an arrangement with Spotsylvania, then we, um, we could see as, as realize as much as, uh, four hundred thousand, um, extra state dollars in special ed. I will tell you, one of the ways the state is able to do this, they do decrease our ADM of the children that are in the regional program, but that four hundred thousand I mentioned has already taken down to account. So, um, we have been meeting with Paul Raskor from the Department of Ed, and it's pretty much a go. And soon you will be asked to, um, approve, um, some type of memorandum. Okay? And we also have some other, uh, expenditure rebates. Okay? So superintendent, school counselors and other mental health staff are critical to address school safety, I mentioned that, work with families. So again, our middle schools, most of my budget requests are focusing on the middle school. We have, um, and again, ten-month administrators, summer is critical, you do professional development, you do recruiting, you do curriculum work, and we have, um, seven of our eight middle schools have a, a ten-month, or maybe ten-month, ten-day administrator. Uh, I really believe they should be twelve months. And truthfully, what I'm noticing in my short time here, a lot of those people wait for the next job. You know, so, um, I'm hoping we can make all building administrators twelve months. We have them at the elementary school, we have them at the high school, some reason we just don't have all of them at the elementary school. So, what's that? At the middle school, yeah. So additional staff for new middle school model, let me, let me just, we'll have more time to discuss that, but we have done, and we appreciate the feedback you gave us, and, and we've taken it seriously, and we've done some preliminary research. I just wanted to know, we looked at eight school divisions that we would all consider high-quality school divisions. No one has a double block of English and double block of math. Many of them have the model that we have presented to you. And what's important, as I shared, and they shared the data, and I say this great, with great respect, there's two groups of children I feel are being adversely impacted in our current model. The child that's very advanced, and the child that's struggling. And I recognize it's new, we all recognize it's new, um, we'll talk more about it, but I just wanted to mention that learning gaps are not going to change by just hoping and wishing. We have to do something different. And the conversation that has been taking place for the last year, and mainly the last couple of months, I think is a very good start of acknowledging that within our student population, there are a group of children not doing as well as they could have or should have, and there's another group of students that we're holding back by not differentiating at the level that we should. That's my own commentary on that for now. Additional staff to meet the needs of children with disabilities, you'll see that. Additional school buses. So I, one of the things that I would like to maybe entertain a conversation with a Board of Supervisors, maybe do more research on this. There's buses and some other, um, one of the things that I did not put in the budget that we absolutely need is a whole new telephone system. Uh, there's not a week that doesn't go by that some school system is emailing us, the phones are down. Our phone system is so, um, for those who remember, uh, Andy at Mayberry with Aunt B, I mean, we might as well, we, we kind of have a system like that. But we don't, it's over two million dollars to upgrade all our phones. And we have two new schools that are going through the infrastructure thing, Moncur and North Star. And, you know, we should begin this conversation early, so we have alignment. But buses and things like that, should they come out of the operating budget, or should they become out of the capital budget? And that's a question that I think we should ask, because we have eleven buses, ten buses that you bought, that you had addition this year, and we're adding another one, that's over a million dollars. Okay? And we factor in about sixty, sixty-five thousand dollars per staff, that's sixteen staff members that we believe we have, but buses are also critically important. So I think it's a conversation to at least have, maybe we should do some more exploring on how school divisions do it, but this is truthfully the first place that I've worked where buses are part of the operating budget, not part of the capital, um, discussion. Not saying what you're doing is wrong, but I'm saying it should at least be part of the conversation as we move forward with the Board of Supervisors. All right. Compensation, um, I'm sorry, Chris, you did it right, I just, you know, I just had my ADHD moment, I jumped up too quickly. Five percent for all teachers, and support staff, three percent for administrators. Compensation study, one, I mentioned the teacher, the, the referral program is directed to teachers and bus drivers, um, is that me? No, somebody else, okay. Uh, expanded tuition assistance. Right now, we're not anticipating any major, um, changes to our health and dental, there's a meeting in February. Um, I already mentioned the middle school, uh, guidance administrative assistance, the nurse scale, contractual increases, um, funds for buses and infrastructure project. I put up, I think, a hundred and twenty-five thousand in for the firefighting program, that's, I met with the, uh, the fire chief, I believe, um, they put in a hundred and twenty-five thousand. So, um, it's already in our program of studies. So if that, uh, if that is supported, um, we put our share in. All right. So now mentioning the positions, so remember, I showed you the trend of special ed over time. These, so the only positions that I moved forward, so you know, in that category, there was a lot more requested, are ones that are mandated, the ones that are required. Okay? The dynasticians, you recognize as, as a, is a, um, a program that you have supported. So we put the five FTS in that, and again, you could read, um, you could read the rest of it, but the special ed, the dynasticians are not required, but that's been a staffing, um, goal for the school board, and to finish that, it would take five FTS. Seventeen point six counselors, um, across the grade levels. Another thing that I'm not a huge fan of, and I'm, I'm sure you're not a huge fan either, we have some counselors that are not full-time members of their school. And it's relationship building, you're building relationships with the parents, you're relationship with the teachers, with relationship with the children, and they're among different schools. So, um, the seventeen point six gets us to a better place than where we are today for our thirty-plus schools. Um, and again, it's, it's very contingent upon, um, the governor's budget. Growth in class size initiatives, um, again, you could read that. The middle school, I wanted to just give clarity on that. The middle school, even if we were not, uh, doing the design, we want to get our class sizes in the core subjects, um, down to a, a goal of twenty-five, um, per teacher. Okay? So that gets us closer there. There are four positions in that fifteen that I mentioned last week that are foreign language. Initially, we were hoping, or they were hoping to have eight positions, one per school, but as a transition, it would be, uh, half per school. Again, the high school, um, in the detail, that's again focusing more on math and science. Uh, again, we have some, some schools that are teaching some subjects, others, that are, others are not, and in some cases, um, our class sizes, um, might be too high. As our population grows, so do as our programs to support children that need a different model. And alternative ed is a, um, is a good example. And a pro, and a teacher for children where English is a second language. North Star, um, again, you could read that, a nurse and two assistants. You know about the procurement, we, we have to address that. So I want to just, uh, we're working on some of the things now, we've also, as openings have come in the central office, instead of filling the opening automatically based on where the person left, I've been shifting some people around. Okay? To help meet some of our needs. We've had people the last few months who have left us and, and not automatically, um, I know Shree, she's very happy I've done, I, I took one of her staff members recently, so, um, but we have other priorities. Okay? And, and so we're, we're, we're moving people around as we see it. So, one of the most exciting programs, so I presented, um, uh, to the Business Advisory Council, and just so you know, we're growing that Business Advisory Council, we're actually having our next meeting in March at, at North Stafford High School, and there's gonna be new members, and we're really talking about, we, we have, we have this in place now, but we want to go deeper and really better understand what we have now. But children, high school students really working and learning and mentoring out in the community. Um, this is also in the, um, profile of the graduate, a priority. So there's a, one position for, um, that ready, uh, workplace readiness. I guess, I don't know when, but a few years ago, we reduced high school administrative assistance. Uh, high schools are growing, we want to put that back. Uh, transportation, you know everything that's happening in transportation, they need more support and help. Another dispatcher, um, oh, what the heck they call it, low voltage, is that right? Low voltage? Yeah, low voltage. Somebody who does low voltage work, don't even ask what that is, I guess that's changing a light bulb, but we're putting that position in there. Uh, technology, so, I mentioned the telephone system, and it's much more than just a telephone system, it's a communication system, it's a safety system. Um, a lot of our, you know, when the phones go down, we lose access, uh, communication with, um, with staff, um, that's a concern. Uh, the phone systems have done correctly, people can communicate with parents much easier, and so on, messages could be left in classrooms. There's a system at Analyst that Technology wants, that's that voice, um, telephone system. And Student Services, um, they lost a position, we have parents that come in that, um, are going through the, uh, registration evaluation procedures, and we've had to move staff around, so, um, these parents could be greeted and processed. All right. So we've also had reductions, we rest one point seven million in compensation benefits, salary lapse, and as I already mentioned, we did some redirecting of staffing. So my request, uh, is a total expenditure three hundred and eight million, increase of, of eighteen million, five hundred and forty-three thousand, six point four percent. Ninety-two positions versus the hundred and thirty-something that was asked. Increase in counting funding, just so you know, um, I don't know how it'll end up, but if you look at the last, uh, ten or twelve years, um, this is one of the lowest requests as a percentage of the budget from the county, but six point six percent or a little bit under eight million dollars. Again, if you look ahead, what, um, I'm proposing, um, now we're filling the two thousand and twenty, I left that out before, is again, a six point four percent increase versus a three point nine, and so on, that you've received in previous years. The local funding, again, um, slightly, uh, increases over previous years, but surely is not at the level it was, um, at other points in time. Eighty-four percent of our budget goes to compensation benefits, which is not unusual, that's usually what school systems have, between eighty and eighty-five percent. What's really good, state wants you to have sixty-five percent of your budget going through an instruction, we have seventy-six percent of our budget going through instruction. So some of the things that I just, we'll kind of begin to wrap up. This is a journey, I don't want this to be a one-time event. If we want to maintain experienced teachers and leadership workforce, we have to collectively think of different ways to, um, make this a place where people don't want to leave. Okay? We have to constantly develop our talent, all people. We need, so review and adjust regulations affecting employees, this is one I really think I'll bring, I don't know if it's a school board policy, or it's a regulation, or, I'm used to regu, boards adopting policies, superintendents, um, do regulations. But we have something which is counterintuitive to me. We know we have a difficulty attracting teachers. And we know, as I already shared with you, especially if you go north of us, we're the lowest paid school. lowest-paid school system north of us. But we cap twenty years of experience. So if you're from, if you're from Fairfax, Arlington, Prince William, and you want to work in Stafford, you're already making more than you would make here at the same step, but we cap you at twenty years. So you would not only make less just based on the number of steps, but if you were twenty-four, twenty-six, twenty-one-year experienced teacher, we would put you on twenty years in Stafford. So I don't understand why we do that. We want teachers, and we want experienced teachers, we have a cap. I could maybe understand if we were the highest-paid school system, and somebody wants to come for their last three years to get the VRS benefit, maybe then it would make sense. But it surely doesn't make sense right now. And another example that I would share with you, which was the number one thing that someone approached me the day I got here, and then I asked Lisa to do research, and is our hybrid model. Our hybrid model as it relates to sick days. We had at one time, you only could carry over twelve, now you could carry over twenty-four. And I was trying to figure out, and I understand the rationale if it relates to long-term disability, but most people who need to take sick days, especially in an organization where most of our employees are mothers, women, you're taking time off because you have a sick child, you might be sick, whatever, now people are taking care of, of an older generation. So we have twenty-four sick days, that's all you could carry over. And we researched a lot of school systems, most don't have, have no cap, and those that do have caps have it higher than twenty-four. So I, I would like to at least, you know, Chris has done a nice job explaining to me, but I'd like us to try to remove any barriers that are preventing people to come and make people feel once they get here. And the other concern I have is if you lose it at twenty-four, and I'm not saying anybody's doing this, but I could, I could think of people thinking about it, if I'm going to lose it, then, then why don't I just use it, okay? But I'm not saying anybody's doing that, but I can, new state and federal mandates. So again, if, hopefully, last year, you had a presentation on the new state accountability and federal accountability system, and if not, we absolutely need to do that. It's completely different, completely different. Two laws went into effect July one of two thousand and eighteen, so we obviously have to meet that. Our student population is ever-changing, from English-language learners to children with disability, mental health. CT offerings to reflect changing opportunities, improve organizational efficiencies, support critical infrastructure upgrades, like the telephones, see clarity of operational versus capital budget needs, and developing, and I think there's an interest by the Board of Supervisors, we had a meeting last week, they seem to have an interest to develop a funding strategy and goals, and I think that would, personally, I think that would be helpful. And I said this a couple of weeks ago, and I just wanted to restate it, the budget has to focus on the main thing, which is children learning, okay? And, and as much as I'm glad to be a superintendent of a school system where all our schools are accredited, you heard Tom say this last week, that still means there's a lot of kids not learning, okay? There's a lot of kids not be, it only takes seventy percent of the kids to pass to be accredited. And, and I could tell you, working with Pam and her team, we have some schools that are going in the wrong way. And some of it is due, in my opinion, maybe not having the training they needed to the new student population, some things may be tied to leadership, there could be a lot of different factors. But the budget focus needs to be on children learning. And I want to leave you, Ken Robinson, if you're not familiar with his work, he's an author and a researcher from England. The fact is that given the challenge we face, we face, education does not need to be reformed, it needs to be transformed. The key to this transformation is not to standardize education, but to personalize it, to build achievement on discovering the individual talents of each child, to put students in an environment where they want to learn and where they can naturally discover their true passions. And I really believe that this school system, in many cases, is doing that, but I think we could truthfully, as a partnership with the community, make this a place that we really would be the best school system, not only in Virginia, but I'll say the world, if I stop at United States. You see the pictures there, and it's one of us as a happy group. So anyway, that's, those are our kids, we, we, I have to tell you, I can't thank you enough, I'm still visiting buildings almost every day, and every day, I get more excited knowing, not only what I see our teachers and students doing, but also knowing the opportunities that are out there. So Saturday, we will have your budget books. I have the PowerPoint now, I didn't want to give it to you because you might have just gone, if you're like me, I would just go to the last page and skip everything else. So I'll give this to Miss Lee, and what I'm asking you to do, so I listened to last year's presentation, and maybe this hearing is already going to say this, but she concluded by saying, if there's anything you want to have before our workshop, our, to get it to the superintendent, and if you do that this way, we could use next Sat, or this Saturday in a more valuable time. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Kizner. Does anyone have any comments or questions they want to raise now, or you want to hold them until Saturday?
I'll hold mine until Saturday.
All right. Well, that will conclude the superintendent's budget presentation. Do we want to take a few-minute break before we move in? Mrs. Egan says yes, yes, all right, all in favor, aye. No opposed, I hear. Well, we will be back at eight o'clock to start the work session on the redistricting. And for those of you who came for this, our consultant has advised us they were unable to come tonight because of the weather, but they are on standby for Saturday if we determine that we want to continue this work session until that point and want their presence. See you.
What made you say fifty-seven minutes?
When you just, you set above these, you make them, so if somebody asks, yeah, they're, they're trying, these trying to read on things, yeah.
Oh, yeah, Scott, you have that handout of the old, uh? We did, we made the copies of the part twos, yeah, we did. We have them, we have them made.
What are you speaking about?
Part two of the whole redistricting, we do, we do.
You getting it?
Yes, sir.
And call the work session to order? We don't need a roll call, right, or do we? No, well, the gang's all here. All right, well, here we are. The consultant is on the phone, correct?
Yes, I am.
Can you hear us all right?
I think so.
All right, and we set this work session so we could discuss the process, and I'll, I'll say, where do we go from here? If that's acceptable? I mean, well, we're here to talk about where we are, we, we have two proposals, neither of which has gotten any kind of, anywhere near unanimous support. We have a lot of comments, a lot of suggestions, a lot of concerns that have been raised by the community. I think we all have our own concerns with, most likely overlap with a lot of, has been raised. We need to decide, and I use that term loosely, because this is a work session and no decisions will be coming out of here, but we need to put ourselves in a position where we can be moving forward to give direction to the consultants as to what our expectation is of them. So what I thought I'd do, unless anyone has any other suggestions, which are welcome, is, you know, just to give everyone an opportunity to address their concerns.
You cannot hear?
Well, she'll have to watch tomorrow morning. I mean, this, this will be available on our website tomorrow morning. I guess everybody that speaks, if we speak into the microphone, then perhaps there'll be better hearing on that part. So does anyone have any other suggestions other than to start? Everyone giving some comments, concerns, and then having a dialogue once we get through the board? Ms. Egan, suggestions?
Scott, would you happen to have a copy for each of us of the policy that includes the criteria that has been established for redistrictings in Stafford County Public Schools?
We can certainly make that, it's very easy, I can get it to you in a few minutes and go and print it.
Why don't we put it on?
It's certain electronic.
I'd like to have a hard copy in my hand, just so I can write notes on it and circle things, and when we get to that portion.
Absolutely, you can get that, give us about five minutes.
Okay, and meanwhile, if you want to pull it up so we can have it for general information, that's a good idea. Any other requests? No, there's no coffee, Ms. Hazard. Sorry. Anybody else need anything for background or referral for the work session?
While they're, while they're working on that, I'd also like to see what was given to the consultant, what did they use in their list of criteria? How did they develop the plans that they did based on what staff instructed them to kind of choose from?
Staff, if I may, Dr. Kizner? Staff did not direct the consultant to provide anything from a criteria perspective. They outlined the criteria that they were going to follow in the proposal that was presented to the school board. They also replicated that criteria again in two or three presentations that they provided before the town hall meetings, or I should say, two, rather. And so that criteria was, was established in several forums that the consultant had with the school board. But we did not say, we certainly furnished them with the policy that outlined the seventeen things to consider when redistricting, but we did not provide them any direction on criteria. They presented it to you during the proposal, then when we had the work session with them, they also identified the criteria, and that was, I think, passed on to the board through Dr. Kizner. We can't get into board docs for some reason, can the school?
Send up an email that you asked for printed purple.
Yeah, policy.
We'll get you a hard copy.
What is this? It's not sufficient.
Okay, found it, thanks. So she's got a fourteen oh three, which has the under policies. Oh, Jesus. Oh, we've got it. It's up there.
Oh, there we go. Okay, good. Can we, can we start here? So, if we, if we had had a, another get together to talk about what we wanted to include in the redistricting, um, criteria, this is where we would have all come together. We would have sat together and pulled out what was important to us. Um, I remember, um, Ms. Hazard had said at one of our board meetings that there's seventeen of them and clearly we'd have to narrow them down, um, at a certain point. Um, that didn't happen. So, it's nearly impossible, and we learned that from the last two redistrictings, to actually incorporate all seventeen. Um, but I think it's important, based on all of the feedback that we've gotten from our constituents and whatever belief you had, you know, out of the gate already, um, to go back and look at this and pull out maybe one or two, three items maybe, and kind of use those to have a little group think and narrow it down a little, maybe even a little bit further. And then ask the, the consultant to go back and take what that, that criteria is and maybe do maybe three more, um, options. Anybody? Okay, so for instance, my, my two things are, um, trying to keep communities together as much as possible and bus distances and, and bus times, those are the, probably the two most important things for me. And if I had to put a third one in there, it would probably be the, the F and R redistribution, um, to make it a little bit more even.
Socioeconomic characteristics is what?
I guess.
I'm just, just looking for what's on there.
Yeah, I guess that's what's, what it's under, yeah, so.
So, so what would be the intent of that? I mean, just to try to flesh these out, because if we are going to send them back, I think we're going to have to give some, you know, fairly specific direction to the consultants if we're going to get something that, you know, meet what we're looking for.
Yeah, I'm just going backwards to, to, when, when I, when I supported the idea of having a consultant do this, I, I had a very clear, you know, process in my head on how it was going to play out, of which none occurred. So what I'm trying to do is kind of go back a couple of steps and then maybe start again with some of the stuff that we, the seven of us, through input from our constituents, want to see in the redistricting plans. That's it.
So. I think Dr. Chase was first, then we'll go to you. One, two, three.
Yeah, so I guess the question is, can we, um, give the consultants sort of instructions to incorporate this with where they are right now and then run their model again to put that in place?
Or in addition to?
Or in addition to. Does that, so, I mean, I, I had suggested that, uh, we've had staff give us program capacities once you've adjusted for the fact that some schools are now substant, are now class size reduction schools and some are not.
Right.
And that I would like them to be able to take that into consideration. But I know it's difficult because you move people and suddenly it changes again, so, yeah, all right, okay.
Ms. John?
I've always been concerned about the number, the high numbers of free and reduced lunch in some schools. And I'm not sure how we are planning on, um, addressing that. That's one. Um, I also want to make sure that we're looking at all schools, not one neighborhood or two neighborhoods. And when we talk about a neighborhood staying together, for example, when I'm looking up there, walking distance doesn't apply to some schools, but it applied to others. So say, for example, if we're going to vote on the criteria, does walking distance apply to a choir? It wouldn't, you know, because, so I'm, I'm, I'm thinking about something that we all could agree on just to make sure that we're all thinking about all the schools. And then the number of times the school or the individuals in these schools have moved, that should also be taken into consideration. And, um, keeping, I'll put it in quotes, neighborhoods together. If they can walk, they want to be able to walk to that school. Um, I, I just don't see how we are sending kids past one school to get to another school and moving them from one school that they're at right now, which is closer to them, to another school that is further away. I, I, I don't get that. That, that's been, you know, something that I'm stumbling on to understand how it was done.
I agree with that, and that was one of the, that was one of the things that we were trying to avoid, right? By doing this, so.
Right, and that is the fir, not that they're listed in priority order, but that is the first thing on the list, proximity of schools to students' residence. And I believe that was one of the criteria that the consultants informed us that they used.
That one I remember, mhm.
Okay, although I think we all would have an example or more than one example within our individual districts where that did not, uh, apply.
Correct.
Ms. Decatur?
So, some of my, I know you guys got my email, um, so you, you've seen it, but I'll, I'll just kind of go over it a little bit. Um, I, so, the schools were set to eighty-five point six percent utilization, um, at the four-year hard number. So, that, that criteria was put above everything, um, and at the expense of other criteria being overlooked. Um, and I don't, the board never kind of gave that direction. So I think as a board, we need to decide where, at what percent do we want our schools? Does that percentage override other criteria? You know, must we keep it at eighty-five percent at the risk of driving further? Or, uh, so you get the idea with that. That's something I, I think we need to decide as a board before we move forward. The feeder patterns are huge for me. I think taking a look at feeder patterns and, and, and the fact that they weren't even looked at, I don't want to harp on, on negative things, but looking at those feeder patterns can solve some of the other issues. If, if we're taking those into account and kind of fixing those, yes, I understand it's an elementary redistricting, but it can speak to some of the other criteria on here. So I think that ties in, and I think it's very important. Um, additionally, and I've mentioned this before, uh, driving the roads, traffic patterns are critically important, um, especially in our county. Um, but more than traffic patterns, understanding our roads, um, how you actually drive to a school. Because when you look at the colors on a map, though they may connect to each other so it doesn't appear that there are islands, there are islands created, um, in our current, in, in both Plan A and Plan B, there are islands, um, just because of dri, actual driving routes. Um, so those are some things that need to be looked at and, uh, fixed before I can approve any plan. And let me just make sure that I've covered all of my concerns. I don't want to sound rude, but I think we also need to talk as a board about the work, whose, whose responsibility is what? Um, the workload that's being put on Mr. Haran and Mr. Townsend. Um, when we initially decided that we were going to outsource, um, that was because their office has a lot of stuff coming up. We have the, um, North Star getting ready to open. We are starting school earlier this summer, and they're busy. And so we did hire a consultant, and I want to make sure that things aren't coming back to their office that can be done by the consultant, because if they are, why did we outsource? So I hope that doesn't sound too harsh, but I think it's important that we really, um, you know, delineate whose job is, is whose. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms., Ms. Hazard?
Mr. McCosker, did they jump over you?
I won't go back.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, because I, I just wanted.
Ladies first. Ladies first tonight.
Um, because I'm going to steal one of your usual ones, so, um, so I will say that we'll do this one together. Because, Mr. McC, I, I have several comments, um, about things that I think we could, could look at. One that, um, came up, and this came up very much in the high school redistricting, um, is about neighborhoods that have not been built. And, um, if there are areas of neighborhoods that have not been built or they are being phased in, it would be nice to have those called out somewhat easier. I mean, I, I probably know some of them in Hartwood, but, and all of you know your areas. But, I mean, we can all sit here and share that. But that information, I believe, should be available based on whatever you all pulled from Mr. Harvey's office across the street of, you know, what's in phase one, what's in phase two, what has been built? Because in some sense, that can help the board also make some decisions. And I'm not saying this needs to be one of the criteria, but I have to say, if I don't have to move three thousand eight hundred and twenty-five children, I would prefer not to. If there are ways we can keep people in schools they're in, because there are neighborhoods that in four years we are projecting out, I, I might make a different decision on, on that. So, I don't know if that is information we can, I mean, I, I mean, I can help look at them, but I, I just think that that's important, especially because I know that's something with the growth we're experiencing. Do we want to at least, there's one that sticks out very easily to me that is easy to move and it fixes the feeder pattern, but that, I don't want to go into, and it just screams to me that it's an easy fix. But that's one that I think as a board would be something, some, Mr. McCosker, did I steal yours? I'm sorry, because that's usually one you, you give. Uh, feeder patterns we've touched on, but I think something that the board really has to figure out is, it has become blaringly, or gla, excuse me, glaringly apparent that the special education, um, work that has been done and presented to us is a significant driver to some things. And I'm almost wondering if we as a board are going to have to approve that first. And I will say, partly, um, when I look at Rocky Run, who ta, who goes from right now a, a single, um, special educator, a contained classroom, that under the proposal they will go to four, I need to be sure that that has been taken into a, into account, that those are three new classrooms potentially taken out of service. And that may have, have been done, but I'm just saying, that decision may be one we are going to have to make upfront. I don't know. I, I, and I, I'm, I'm just saying, I'm, I'm not sure. But if we are moving those classrooms and adding those classrooms, which has been talked about, how do we make sure those have been in, included in our, in our capacity? Because that's three, I mean, I, so, but I, I'm just saying, that we didn't have that information when we started this process. This came partway through. So it's just something, like I said, it may, it, you all may say that is included in the new projections, but I'm just saying, is that going to be a decision we as a board are going to have to make early so we can come up with real capacity at some of the schools if we are moving these programs? And please know, I am not saying that we are adopting it, and this is nothing against the work and the great work done by our, um, our staff. I do have some thoughts about, um, Moncur in that particular, and I've raised that, that that was designed, it seemed to have a certain number, but we can talk about that, that's more of a specific. And I would say the only final thing I'll say, at least at this point, is when we talk about proximity and the issue of con, contiguity, I, I think there's two ways to look at that. And I appreciate that the consultant showed us pictures of schools with non-contiguous things. But I would say as a parent, I'm thinking more, is my neighborhood contiguous to going to either one school or two schools? And I think it's a reverse, I think it, I don't, I, I'm just saying, I, I think then it's a different look at it. It's not the school zone, those were created by us. The neighborhoods weren't created by us. But if I'm a parent, I'm not looking at, well, does this school zone, and I'm not saying those aren't anomalies and we shouldn't look at them, but if I'm looking at it as a resident, I'm like, does my area take some pattern out of that area to same middle schools, same high school? May not boat, may not, because we have seventeen elementary schools, so I, but it's sort of a, a different view of how to look at proximity of schools to student residents. And I don't know if that makes any sense, but it, to me, seems like the school zone look, it really should be our citizen look. So, I don't know if that's helpful or not, or is that really confusing?
No, no, this, this is a time to talk. I mean, we're not going to come up with the solutions right now, but this is an opportunity for all of us to talk about what our concerns are, what our observations are, and perhaps what we'd like to see come back. You know, we're not, as you said, you know, you could name one, but we're not saying move this one and, and that one, but we're, we're talking generally, and I think this is very helpful. Um, and I, I, I don't know about the rest of you, but I'm in agreement with most of the things that I've heard. I mean, I, I think we all share the concerns. We just need to communicate them to the consultant, but give some direction. You know, we, you know, this, this is first just laying it all out there, then we're going to have to, to narrow it down or, or to prioritize. We're not going to say there's nothing there that's not important, but we have to say what, what we want to see prioritized. At, at least that, that's my take on it, but no, I, I.
And we may say we want prioritized under Plan C, this stuff, and, and I'm just making this up. Plan D, prioritize this stuff so we can see it run two different ways.
Now, we're, we are going to have to be on a pretty short track here, but, but that'll be something else. Mr. McCosker, it's your turn.
Sure. Boy, I get a turn already, that's great.
Start the clock, Mr. Paul.
Start the clock. No, I'm going to keep it short, I'm going to keep it to process. Um, I think we need to look at, uh, you know, to make sure that we're all in agreement, and I think Saturday we'll talk about the timeline, make sure we're all okay with, with the timeline that is presented. And we've got to come up, staff needs to come to us and tell us why we can't, I can't do the timeline for redistricting. Um, right now it's, I, I understand it's a can. Uh, the, number two is, um, I think we need to look at, uh, schools that are opening above ninety percent initially. I think that's a tough one to swallow, um, when we're doing all this hard work and, and we see schools at ninety-four, ninety, and even ninety-seven in some of the plans. And maybe that's a criteria where it needs to be screened out, you know? Um, like if, that, we just can't allow that to happen. You know, it shows, uh, the seven-year look shows us the, the snapshot from next year to, or this year to two, twenty, twenty-five, twenty-six. So we need to, um, kind of make sure that that eighty-five percent, if we can keep it in there, that, that, that's kind of what I thought we, we were looking for, so, um, that's an issue. Some other, um, issues that I, um, I want to talk about is, you know, I think, uh, the board's already mentioned it, but we do need to look at bus rides, we do need to look at these long, these long, uh, rides into, um, into the schools to make sure that we're not, um, you know, have a kid on there ninety minutes, right? And taking, taking to effect traffic. And because you know that, you know, I know in Ms. Decatur's district specifically, if that bus takes that left out of this building and goes down Route One, there, it gets ugly real quick, right? During, in the morning. And there's a lot of other places like that, so we need to kind of take that into consideration. And I think lastly, and then I'll be quiet, um, uh, on, on the processes, um, I've gotten a lot of emails about our, um, low incidence programs, um, autism, EBS, learning support. And so, um, I'd just like to take another look at, you know, um, you know, why are we moving them? Why is, why is it so important that we move these programs in certain schools and certain, and, 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 um, is that the best, is that best suited for our community? So those are my, those are my points.
And Dr. Chase, do you want to, I know you sent us an email, but, uh, you know, for the record, we can summarize? Or add what you want?
Yeah, um, I, I shared with the school board, um, just a few concerns, and they were, um, more general concerns. So, for example, I can't support opening the new Moncur at ninety-seven percent capacity, fifty percent free and reduced lunch, um, because we're setting that school up to fail. And, and so I can't support that. And, uh, in looking at which schools become class size reduction and which ones already are class size reduction, we need to be taking that into consideration as well. And it's tricky, and I understand that it's tricky.
And it's tricky, and I understand that it's tricky. So, those are sort of my two big things.
May I?
Sure.
While we're throwing out suggestions and comments, one of my parents, or Jamie's parent, spent a lot of time working on at least the northern half of Stafford, and how it equates to what's going on here on the 610 corridor. And what I would like to do is, she's a researcher, doctoral candidate, this is what she does, I would like the consultant to at least look at her work, and if any of it makes sense, put it into an option, or incorporate it into an option, or, but she spent a lot of time with it, and I would like to respect that and have it looked at as a consideration.
Sure.
I would just respond to that. I do believe it's been sent to Arc Bridge already. However, if it's, you know, if the board would like to let them know that it's more of a priority to have them look at certain things, depending on, so I guess they could analyze it, and when we meet with them, I guess, give us their synopsis of it.
Well, I would ask the board to give direction to the contractor to consider every single comment that came in from the public, because a lot of those comments have suggestions. Now, it may relate to a particular area, but, you know, I don't want to give priority to one over another one, because I've seen a lot of suggestions that make sense. And the best suggestion that came to me, I wouldn't say the best, but certainly the most memorable was from someone in my district that lives across the street, literally across the street, from the elementary school they're in now, and they were redistricted. So, they're going to have to get on the bus, go away from the school across the street. But the comment, the comment was, I hope common sense prevails. So, that would be, you know, my hope here as well. You know, common sense, along with all our criteria, but let's not just move areas to get to a number. And that's my biggest concern about the plan, you know, in the areas, and I'm focusing in my district, because that's what I'm certainly most familiar with, although I am reading every single email. And I can identify particularly with the, you know, the long bus rides, I mean, why are we moving kids this way instead of the way the traffic goes? But there are a number of instances that look to me that it was just reaching to get that percentage. You know, why move an area that is closer to three schools, to the fourth farthest school, other than to get to that magic number? So, that's, I think I've heard that from, you know, the board, but that would be, you know, my request is that we certainly aim for a percentage, but that should not be the whole basis for a proposal, for having that there. But on this, the same token, I wouldn't want to start at 90% either.
Ninety-seven percent.
But I had a discussion, I got permission, and I talked to Mr. Townsend this afternoon, because someone in my district had raised a question, how did we get in both proposals? And the consultant responded, it said we were all copied on it, but I didn't get the response. I went to the, yeah, I know, I didn't get it either, but I went to the site on the board docs that the public is welcome to go to as well, which has all the comments, all the emails that are coming into us, and anything from the consultant, you know, back is on there. And the constituent had asked for the numbers for his particular subdivision. And when the numbers were given back, I said, hmm, you know, it didn't make sense to me. So, I talked to Mr. Townsend, and we talked about a couple other ones, and, you know, I have some questions about the numbers, and he explained to me that these projections came from a different consultant that we hired last fall, and that overall, you know, they're fairly accurate. And I get that, I'm happy, you know, countywide, they're accurate. But if they're not accurate, if they're way off in a particular subdivision, or two subdivisions, or 10 subdivisions, or, you know, streets, that could be a problem, because we're looking four years out. And if they say, we're going to increase by 50%, and we all know, you know, certain subdivisions are going to increase by maybe 200%, and some are going to increase by 10% or maybe decrease, and they show up going up 50, I don't know, I'm not suggesting we're going to be able to solve that, but I think it's important that we be looking at that, because we know our schools, and we know our neighborhoods, because we live there. Yes.
Madam Chair, permission? I have a couple of questions, but comments also, and I don't know who could give me the answers, but did we do anything with the feedback so far that we've gathered? Did we, I think we talked about putting them in some kind of a, and I don't know if the consultant could hear me? Did we do anything with them yet? Put them in some kind of a correlation, like questions? Did we analyze them yet? Like, what are we waiting for?
Yeah, I asked for that.
Is this a question for me?
Yes. Priti, right? Priti?
This is Priti, is this question for me?
Yes. Yes, for you.
Okay. What we did was, we compiled all the emails into a Word document, and we also prepared an Excel spreadsheet, in which we identified the issue, the school, the subdivision, and yes, so we have a spreadsheet and Word document with complete email content.
Okay, so, what would be our next steps with that?
Well, I'd like, this is, Patricia Healy, I have a question of that. You have the spreadsheet, is there any change that you would make in response to those comments, or any proposals that you would-
There are some planning units that we are, we are actually exploring, looking at all the comments that we have received from the community. Most of the comments are that they do not want to move. Then there are some specific comments for about-
I still have some questions.
-the neighborhoods that we have heard in the town hall meetings, and we are looking at the feasibility of reassigning them. And at a glance, some of them look very reasonable, so we are going to, we are evaluating their feasibility.
And that's based on all the comments that have come in, in the email, as well as from the town hall meetings?
Yes, ma'am. We have received about, I want to say around 200 emails, and we have looked at all of them, we have analyzed them, and we have read the emails to determine what the issue is. So, yes, we are analyzing them, we are looking at the feasibility of reassigning whatever neighborhood it is possible in Plan A, as well as in Plan B.
Okay. Ms. Young, did you want to-
Yes. Priti, I had another question. I'm trying, I'm not trying to talk too loud, but I want you to be able to hear my question. I wanted you to be here to show me the tool, and unfortunately, you're not. So, I'm not sure if this question could be answered, but like, and this question was asked by the public, Plan A and Plan B look similar in terms of numbers, except, you know, the area is a little larger when the redistricting was done. Where did you start? Like, did you start like in the north or in the south, and then moved around the west? Like, why are they so similar? And if you start somewhere else, will it still give you the same result? Like, is it based off the criteria? If you change the criteria, then you will have a different output, or would that not matter?
Okay. First of all, I want to say that I really wanted to be there today, but the weather did not cooperate for us. I would like to get another opportunity where I could show you the process, because I can sit here and describe it to you, but if you provide me with an opportunity to show you the tool and the process, I think it would make things more clear. And we were asked if we are available on Saturday morning, and we have said that we could be there between 9:00 and noon time, so we would really like that opportunity. And to answer the other part of your question, yes, we use the same redistricting criteria, and we looked at different ways so that we could provide you with the different scenarios. And the process was, we started, we started with the schools which had the highest capacity, which were over capacity, and in this case, you know, looking at the current data, we had Winding Creek, and we had Rocky Run. So, we started with Winding Creek, which is currently at 96.93% capacity, and in 2019, 2020, it is projected to be at 109.31%. So, we started with Winding Creek, and we looked at what are the schools, neighboring schools, which school can provide relief to Winding Creek? And then we went around and we looked at each planning unit that was adjacent to the neighboring school, and that if it could provide relief. Determining which planning units can be moved to which school. And we looked at program capacity of the school, the number of students in the planning unit, and then we looked at proximity to schools, and then assigned the planning unit to the closest school as much as possible. We looked at neighborhoods, and we looked at planning units, and we saw if any particular neighborhood was being split. And if it was split, then we looked at another planning unit, so that we could keep the neighborhood together. Then we looked at street centerline files to determine if bus routing could be a potential issue. And once we were done, then of course, we validated our plans with the SEPS subject matter experts, which included the transportation department. We kept checking the capacity in each of the giving and the receiving schools, to make sure it was close to 85.6%. And then we also looked at physical geographical islands and disconnected areas that you have, and we tried to connect them. And this was our process. And then, after we were done with one school, we went to the next school. And so, like, we started with Winding Creek, so we, then after doing Winding Creek, we said, okay, now let's look at the next school, which is over capacity, or which is projected to be over capacity. And we kept repeating this process. And for Stafford County, what happens is, you have Rocky Run, which is at 97, you have Winding Creek, which is at 96%, but the schools which have low capacity, like Garrisonville, Rock Hill, Barrett, they're up in the north. And so, when we make a change, it kind of impacts the other schools also, because we are trying to move things and use the capacity at these three schools that I mentioned. So, this is the process that we used. It's a very logical, reiterative process, because once we move a planning unit, and keep in mind that we are working only with planning units. So, it's a very logical, reiterative process, and once we look at it, we go back and we revisit it, and of course, we were targeting 85.6%. And I, like I said, you know, if we get an opportunity, I would really like to come by and show that to you.
Thank you, Priti.
Dr. Chase?
So, I wanted to pull it back to considering a plan that somebody in the community has created. And while I appreciate the input and the effort, I do think it's important, if we're talking about having an independent process, that, you know, we put out an RFP for a consultant, and I think going with a plan that an individual who may be trying really hard to be objective may not be completely unbiased in what their goals are. And so, I would just say, I feel like we need to be a little bit careful about that. And the other thing, I just wanted to say, that the consultant keeps talking about Winding Creek being at 96%. Winding Creek currently is over 100% capacity. It might have been at 96% in September, but that is no longer the case. And I want to stress that, because a lot of people are not sure why we're doing this, and couldn't we wait? But we really do have to provide relief to these schools that are really over capacity.
Ms. Decatur?
Yes, and I do appreciate that, and I agree as well. I think if there are some good points of anyone's plans that have been brought forward, I want to make sure that we are considering all of those. I want to take it back, because I, and I'd really like to get some sort of general consensus on this one. I forgot to mention, because it was in a separate email, another one of my major concerns is that we, the concern is that we will approve a redistricting, and lumped into that redistricting approval is the special ed transfers. And so, my question is, I, question statement, I want to make sure that our, if we are going to move any of these classrooms or programs to other schools, I want to make sure that that is a vote independent of the vote that we are taking for the redistricting process. And if that is the case, and we can do that, because I think it deserves, I think it deserves a very close look at who we are moving, where, why, how many times have they been moved before, all the same things, but an independent look. And if we can do that, and you guys agree, I guess that has to be done before, like you said. So, I didn't want us to comb over that, and not really come to a conclusion or an agreement.
I have a question I'd like to raise with respect to that. Dr. Kitzner, was the special ed proposal done before the plans, or after the plans? I got the impression it was done after the plans came to us. When was that proposal done? Because the first time I saw it was when I walked into one of the town hall meetings.
Let me touch upon the special ed plan. So, the current placements of our low incidence programs are mainly, not all the time, due to where we had open space. Okay? This was an opportunity to work with possibly 350 children. We've heard from about 20, and we respect every single one of their feedback. We saw an opportunity to place those programs where we thought would be the greatest benefit for the children in those current programs, and looking down the road. Acknowledging that, as you're experiencing with the general population, people like where they are. So, we then worked with the consultants to say, this is where we believe the program, that's why A and B have the same distribution, have the same placements of the programs. So, then we factored in where there would be lost capacity, because we would have a special ed room there, or greater capacity, because it would be removed. Now, Wendy and I did meet this morning, not tonight, but we are prepared on Saturday to present another proposal based on the feedback. And we are also looking at some of the emails, like all of you have been, of some individual students where we think the parents have a very valid concern, and try to address those student by student, because that's what we should do for every student, but we absolutely do that for children with disabilities. So, I just want to put the big picture in, that, this was obviously before I arrived here, but looking at past minutes and everything, and documents, in many cases, I don't want to say all, where they are located now, because that was where available spaces. And we saw this as an opportunity to improve that, improve upon that, and you are correct, I'm not sure if anybody has said this, but you would be correct, to say, if we just left it as it is, we could do that too. We would just have to work with the consultants to make adjustments. But we don't think that is really, if we use proximity as one of the criteria, which I would have asked you, go back to Ms. Healy's first comment, as I look at that board, listen to everybody's comments, you have about 11- to everybody's comments, you have about eleven other criteria that the guys seem to want. And it seems to be even some question, are we still staying with eighty-five or, or ninety percent? So, to help the consultants, I think I would ask you, so we don't sit back there a couple of weeks, still not pleased, is to narrow down exactly what we want. But saying that, we are prepared to do what we do, we would prefer to do what we think is, we, we would like to keep this out of the process in a sense, because we think that this is a better way of addressing the needs of our students. And one of the requirements is to, for children with disabilities to be as close as possible to their, to their community, their school, their neighborhood. But we also acknowledge that we equally we can make some tweaks, and we have already, Wendy has already worked with Matt and to tell the consultants, if we did that, that this school's gonna either lose a classroom or another classroom is gonna be gained. So, I guess I'm just saying, we were ready to do what the board wants. I feel very comfortable, and I know you do too, that Wendy is just completely looking at the best interest of the currently living children, and also just basically.
Is your mic on?
Oh, I think.
Yeah, we gotta remind you of the mic.
Anyway.
I, I don't know.
Just real quick.
You guys have heard me enough, but.
You're gonna, you're gonna work with us.
Yeah, we're gonna work with you.
And you're gonna work with the team, Wendy Martin-Johnson.
All right, but, but to go back to Ms. Decatur's question, I just wanna clarify this before we.
Right, that's what, that's what I'm.
I, I, I didn't, I never thought we were voting on the special ed as part of the redistricting proposal, A or B. I, I think this is something that we need to look at independently, and hypothetically, if we are at, you know, the eighty-five percent target, there should be room in every single school for special education programs, at least.
Well, that, that, that was my point, Madam Chair, that I wanted to address with Mrs. Decatur, is that it, it has, it'd be nice, if every, if all the schools were projected to be at eighty-five percent in Plan A and Plan B, or the next plan, then, then maybe a class or two would not be a big deal. However, let's take Ferry Farm, for example, opening at ninety percent on Plan A and ninety-four percent with Plan B, and that was with the removal of the one autism class. And so, that equates to the, you know, the autism, if the autism class stayed there, there'd be eight students in that classroom, but now that the autism class is removed from Ferry Farm, it's twenty-six, and then the difference, eight minus twenty-six is it. So, that would actually push my percentage up in Plan A if we don't take, if we don't kind of address the, as part of the redistricting, okay, I guess, I guess that's my argument, if we don't address this as part of the redistricting, we're not gonna have accurate percentage numbers to actually say, hey, so, I mean, would ninety, would ninety-five percent be okay?
It is embedded in the numbers that you have. I guess, it has been factored, so.
Currently?
Yes.
And so, what I'm saying is, when we make a decision on Saturday to say, we are going to add extra classrooms, I'm saying there's, there's a second order effect that you're gonna get a percentage increase or decrease on the schools. That's, that's all I'm saying. So, it isn't quite as independent as.
Your next.
Sure.
I, I guess I'll just renew what my first comment was tonight, that I think that that plan drives some of where we go, and that's why I was saying, I thought that needed to be addressed first. I mean, that's kind of where I was trying to take us, and then I would, I, I am very open to hearing what our experts say. That's what, I mean, that's why we're here. But I also do think we need to look at, it is my understanding, and I don't, didn't bring everything that we all have on all this stuff, you know, if we are also building schools to accommodate programs too, I also think we need to make sure that we are also honoring that too, because some, it sounds like Moncur was built to have a certain number there. Now, that may mean we know where the growth will go next, but I believe when we start looking at, and we build new schools that have that, and we are using them for general ed classrooms, that puts a lot of issue or, or capacity on cafeterias, gymnasiums. So, if we have assumed we would have seven special ed classrooms in a building, and now four or five of them are gen ed, that's gonna have a, a bigger, a bigger issue. So, it's just, I think we wanna, I don't wanna say balance, but look at what we're building, 'cause I think we know that our schools in the future need to have spaces for these programs, because I believe even Ms. Martin-Johnson said, you know, in two to three years, we could have an autism program in every class, in, in every school. So, I think we need to be thinking broadly there. So, you know, I agree with everybody. I think that's a, I think that's a decision point we have to probably make sooner rather than later.
Yeah, and I guess why I'm a little confused is I thought we'd made this decision. I thought right at the very beginning of this process, we said that we wanted special ed located where it should be, rather than where there was space, and we asked staff to do that, and they did that. And so, now we're saying that we wanna mucky around with what staff has done, and it's not my area of expertise, and I would personally be really insulted if it was my area of expertise, and everybody was telling me that we shouldn't do that. So, I, I, I certainly think that, I'm happy to hear that staff has looked at what people are asking for and has made tweaks, but I don't know whether we wanna push this process out so much further by getting more involved than, than maybe we're qualified to be.
I have a, a comment on that. If the assignments were made based on where the students are today, those students are not gonna be in elementary school, a lot of them won't be in elementary school four years from now. They may be in a different place, so what do we do then? I thought we were somewhat trying to centralize within the county where we were gonna offer certain programs to cut down on the distances that the students would have to, to travel, because in the past, we have put them where there was room. But in, you know, in a, in a perfect world where there was room everywhere, where would they best go? Now, if, if you wanna say your criteria's gonna go, put them where the students are today, then that means every year, you should relook at it and see where the students are, if, if, if that's the plan you're gonna follow. So, I, I, I didn't realize it was already in there, because the first time I saw it was walking into one of the town halls, and here's a sheet of paper that people had, and I said, oh my gosh, gee, where'd you get that? And they go, oh, at the front desk. I said, oh, okay.
Just so you know, there was a request by someone to bring that forward. Yeah, you know, we, we, we are complying with your request. So, why it was a surprise, 'cause, well, anyway.
I'm not, I'm not criticizing, I'm just saying that I, if I wasn't aware of it, and I'm part of the process, then, you know, how could, you know, the, the citizens know, you know, what was done, and, and I, you know, I'm hearing that the criteria is closest to where the students are today, but I do question that, because our population is increasing. We all know from our subdivisions, as the students grow older, you know, and, and move out of school, a lot of times, the families stay in those houses, and there's no new students coming, and they're moving somewhere else. So, it's something to think about, you know, what we're gonna do at some point in the future. That, that's why I was saying, I see it as a separate, you know, vote, so to speak, because I don't wanna tie in to special education, which, if we go back to December, you know, I, I remember saying, this is really important, and to a certain extent, I know redistricting is hard on everybody, but on the special ed students and their families, it is even more taxing and challenging.
And I know you know that transportation is part of their special ed services, so we could transport children completely different than we do for the general ed population.
Well, anyway, I just, I, I think we, we need to get some consensus, as Ms. Decatur's asked, you know, how do we wanna, you know, address this? Can, can we address it independent of voting on an option, whether it's A through Z, whatever we end up with, you know, look at the special education independently? Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, that's all I'm asking, and just to clarify, I don't wanna mucky around with anything. I just feel exactly, I just feel exactly the same way. The first time I saw it was, you know, at a presentation, you know, with, with the rest of the redistricting stuff, and I believe it deserves a little bit more attention. I want to know who, what, when, where, and why, and if they've been moved three times in four years, I'm not doing that. So, I wanna make sure that I know everything that's happening with that, and if I'm voting on an entire Plan A redistricting or Plan Z, and it's stuck in there, and I'm focusing on Plan Z and not all of these other children, I just wanna make sure that we're focusing on, on ev, all of it. That's all. My time's up.
That was a process foul. We have, we have fifteen minutes left in this conversation. I say again, fifteen minutes.
I thought Ms. Egan wants to go home. No, you can't go home because you fouled out.
That was the.
I did not do that on purpose.
That was on purpose.
It is nine o'clock.
And that was the, we're gonna hold this on Saturday.
We can continue this tonight, but do you wanna? We really can talk about it on Saturday. If we could get a little bit more of a rundown of who, what, when, where, why on Saturday, then that would be great.
Yeah, let's do that. Dr. Kizner, is that?
We'll give you everything you need.
I'd like to hear from one more board member still.
So, what, before, before we go to that procedurally, I just wanna make sure, we're going to, we're going to notice another work session on Saturday. Since the consultants are only available nine to twelve, why don't we move the, the budget work session to follow the work session on the redistricting? Is that agreeable?
Can I make a comment?
Ms. Young, I'd like to hear from Ms. Young.
Is that, that's agreeable?
What is agreeable? What, what do you ask?
We're gonna have, we're gonna notice a work session on Saturday to, well, we're still going tonight, but I'm sure we're not gonna finish. To have the consultants come down, Dr. Kizner can get us the, the special ed additional information, and the consultants can talk about and show us their, the process, and then we can talk about what we're looking for from them, unless you wanna give them direction tonight. All right. Did you, is there anybody who hasn't had more turns? Who, who's next?
Ms. Young.
Ms. Young. You again.
You again, really? Do you know what?
I'm just teasing you. I'm just teasing you.
Really? You know what, I, I just wanted to comment on the great work that the staff had done, and, and the fact that I didn't even think about, I thought, oh, all the kids are gonna have, you know, you know, good attention, and where they're gonna move, and when they say special, you want parents to feel that all the kids are being considered equally, and, and yes, their special attention are given to them, but I thought it was, I admired the staff, that they took time and was able to give us that information separate and apart and say, this is what we did with the kids. So, thank you for that, Wendy and your team. The question I have, and it's a little bit different, and it's going to Scott. I don't have my paperwork, I'm doing a holly. When is our next school supposed to open, next elementary school?
Of course, Scott, pick the thing.
I, I guess, I'm, I'm just trying to, because.
I assume, are you talking Moncur?
No.
Number eighteen.
Okay, based on the information that we provided to the board, and based on the board approval of the CIP, the CIP list, using the new program, program capacities, we are not, and using a trigger of a hundred percent, which is all debatable, I know.
We never approved that.
Well, that's the current trigger that we used as part of, and that's why there's not an elementary school eighteen on.
Okay, that needs to be changed.
But the school board has not approved that. The list that you provided, that we provided to the Board of Supervisors had elementary school eighteen on it.
Okay.
But the program capacity that was approved, barring the trigger, if we used a hundred percent, it wouldn't be within, inside the ten-year window.
Okay, so, so.
So, I don't have an answer for you.
So, we have a couple of schools at a hundred percent right now, and if our trigger's supposed to be, just hypothetically, it's supposed to be eighty, we would, we should have a school on the docket at some point in time. Nineteen, twenty, what?
In fairness to Scott, spring of two thousand and eighteen.
Microphone.
Okay, no. Spring, spring of two thousand and eighteen, at the administrative level, see, it's easy for me to say that, 'cause I wasn't here. At the administrative level, there was a, an agreement to do a hundred percent of the aggregate. So, not when a school hits a hundred percent, when all seventeen schools reach a hundred. Last week's meeting with the vice, with the chair and vice chair, and the chair and, I guess, vice chair of the Board of Supervisors, we had discussions about this, because the, the comp plan says ninety percent. I think most of you believe it's ninety percent, and what actually needs to happen sooner than later is to get clarity, vote on it, they vote on it, and we know that we're talking ninety percent. And I'll just say one thing, and then I really will be quiet. And I'm not even sure that's even the best procedure.
No, if I don't get all my questions out, I, I forget them, just like you do.
Yeah, because if we do ninety percent of the aggregate, you still may have some schools that, some communities that are growing much faster, and they may hit a hundred, a hundred, ten, ten percent. I'm not gonna be quiet until I'm ready, so.
We have three minutes.
So, I, I think we need to rethink it, but let's all agree, I think everybody's agreeing, the hundred percent is really not something we're supportive of.
Ms. Hazard, you'll be after Ms. Young.
Yeah, I wasn't done. Yeah, okay, no, it's okay. So, the reason, no, no, sit down yet. The, so, the reason why I'm asking this is because we, we have this plan out for, and I'm not trying to change all this redistricting thing, I'm just trying to get us to think a little bit about what we're doing here. So, we, we should have a school on the docket to be built, because here again, we're trying to move the kids, and then when a, a new school opens up, when it has to, we're gonna move them again.
You bet.
And so, I'm thinking what we should be looking at is having that school, knowing which kids are supposed to be in that new school, and making sure that we're not moving them. And if that area where they're living in is gonna be overcrowded, maybe this is where we need to get our little trailers, or something like that, to, to make sure that they're there in that area. When they, when the new school opens up, they will be right there, they're still in the neighborhood, and it's not a big movement, because to me, right now, there are too many kids moving, and they will have to move again, and this is not what we want if we're looking at the list of walking distance, feeder pattern, contiguous attendance areas, and socioeconomic characteristics of school populations. That's all.
I know my long-winded talk before about trying to explain, when the consultant talked about the methodology, and I'm not saying that that is not a, a, a great way to do it, but it actually illustrated what I was trying to say, and my point, is we were starting with the school moving out. Is there a way that we can look at, we start with each of the schools and say, within some distance, let's make sure all the walking zones go to that school, and you start there with each of the schools, understanding that we have some schools that are at a hundred percent, but there are still going to be schools, I mean, I know, I'm just gonna use Hartwood, there is not a way that a person at the Falkir Line should be sent to Falmouth, or picked somewhere else. There are some people we are not going to move, and I was always hoping that that amount of people was gonna be seventy to eighty percent, like, that, of people that aren't moving, and you all said, let's see, like, about a quarter of the elementary school kids would move. I'm, I'm doing wild rounding. I mean, so, is there a way to look at how to do this, to minimize that by looking at it with school and proximity to the school, and then, I get it, we're going to get somewhere, and I know it may not be a circle, but this, I'm a visual, at some point, some of those circles, we're gonna go, oh, that ship puts that school at a hundred and twenty-five percent, or whatever it may, so we'll know that there are some areas that are on the fringes of these circles, that it might get to, what I think a lot of the emails we are seeing is, I'm not close to where I'm going. Does that make any sense? I'm, maybe that helps what my comment was earlier.
So, so have a radius.
Some, or something.
As a starting point. Actually, that's what I was thinking as well.
But that was what I was trying to say with my point of saying, we started with the school.
And that's the proximity, closest school. I think we're all getting a notice from, oh, Stafford County Public Schools.
Delay, is it delay or cancel?
I didn't answer mine, but.
Delay?
The problem with that is.
Reassessed?
There's no relief.
Two hour, two hour delay.
I'm just saying, if we are looking potentially of running something new, because some of the comments we're hearing, that A and B are so similar, this may not work. They may, it may be run that way and say, this is really a disaster, but that's just conceptually how I think.
Well, and there's a lot of people that talk about fairness, you know, if you're, if you're near a school, why shouldn't you go there?
You can walk to it, right?
Right, or, or your house has been there for years, and, you know, you've always been at that school.
Can I ask a quick question? On the backs of that comment, did they take into the, into consideration the discussion that we had? had on preemptive redistricting? Did that come into play at all? Because that was something I was very specific about.
Oh, right. She might have signed off.
Maybe she heard you.
Time to go. That Mather?
I'm here.
Did you hear, did you hear my question, ma'am?
Can you say it again, please?
We had, during one of our work sessions with you, we had discussed doing, incorporating some, what did I call it?
Preemptive.
Thank you. It's late. Preemptive redistricting, based on what was on the books going forward. Don't laugh at me. Was that taken into consideration, and is that included in this, in the Plan A or the Plan B?
I'm not sure what you mean by preemptive redistricting. Can you explain that to me?
It was the comment I made at the beginning about neighborhoods that aren't built yet.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, how are you, how are you reallocating some of the expected people, kids, coming into the schools in the near years?
We are just looking at the projection data. And the projection data should, are you talking about new subdivisions?
Correct.
Okay, that is incorporated in the projection.
Couldn't we minimize the number of kids we move if we do more of the preemptive? Meaning, just move who we have now, and then worry about, you know, the 2,000 apartments that are going in and celebrate, or whatever it was? Looking at where we're going to have space, and then reallocating those, you know, the soon-to-be kids? Kind of like what we did with Embry Mill at the last redistricting.
Okay, what, right now, we are looking at the fourth year. What we could do is, or what could happen is, it's a suggestion, that we could look at the nearer years, like just two years out. So that would exclude those kids, which would probably, apartments being built in like three years, four years. So that way, those kids could be eliminated, not taken into consideration.
Yeah, that's not really what I had in mind.
I think if you all would take into account the things that I asked on the neighborhood names, if you don't have them, Jeff Harvey has them, of what's out there, and we can put them in the APUs, and it may, I think that's the simplest way for us, the board, to deal with it.
I just wanted to.
I mean, if there is data that would support it, I'm happy to use it.
If I could just clarify, we do have all approved subdivisions as of September of every year incorporated in the projections. As far as the preemptive redistricting, that gets a little tricky, because every new, or every approved development, as soon as it's approved, doesn't get its own planning unit assigned to it. Because they may be a 100-acre farm where we're going to have 100 houses come in, but right now, it's one house. So every, so therefore, that planning unit is not currently statistically significant to run projections on now. So ultimately, what happens down the line, when it becomes more dense, then it gets split off. But now, more than likely, most subdivisions are part of a different, or an existing planning unit with existing houses tied into it as well.
I think we need to talk about this a little bit more on Saturday.
There are several that will fix some problems. I can name them, but I won't do it tonight.
Well, be ready on Saturday.
Yeah. And I just had, I liked, Ms. Hazard, what you said about sort of a circumference around a school. But my only concern about that is the APUs might not fit in nice little circumferences. And so then, you know, that may be why we're sometimes seeing people who live right across the street from the school, if they're in a really large planning unit, while they live right across the street from the school, there might be 100 houses behind them that don't live right across the street. So, but common sense would, hopefully, we could work on that.
And I think with that, we made them smaller for that, for that reason, after the high school, that I think it will be less of a problem than when we looked at. And here's the thing, running it sort of like that, let's say it moves 6,000 kids, I can then very easily say to my constituents who are running, saying, we tried it under this, and everybody moved. I'm, my hope would be, less would move, but I'm not, I don't have the computer software. But I think that's a theme I keep hearing, that I feel like we need to have an answer of, yes, it's better, or no, it's worse. And the only way to do that is to either run it or see it, because that's the kind of person I am. That's the reason I suggested it.
And I think there is a reasonable expectation on the part of our community, that if you live close, and I'll leave close undefined at this point, but we can all imagine, you know, not walking, because a lot of our streets, you can't walk. But if you're close to a school, why should you have to be on a bus, go past three other schools to get to the one you're assigned to, when we're trying to fix it now? I mean, this is the opportunity to try to do the best we can. And I would say that if you're going to be assigned to a school that is fourth farthest from your house, shame on us. And just, you know, the example that you gave is a good example, but that doesn't apply to the instance I was talking to, because the particular subdivision that is right across the street has 25 homes in it.
Sure.
And a lot less than that children. So it's the common sense, and I will, you know, give the consultants the, you know, the benefit here of the doubt that they weren't trying to create these difficult situations, but I think they were trying to match the numbers at the end, rather than applying common sense. And that, you know, if we're going to give direction at some point, I think we're going to have to be somewhat flexible in those percentages. You know, some might be, you know, over, some might not be, but we know our neighborhoods, and we know where they're built out, and where they're probably not going to increase to the extent of the projections. And this is the discussion I have with Mr. Townsend. I mean, overall, these projections might be very accurate, and I understand they are. But on an individual basis, he's going to look at one for me, for a built-out subdivision, one APU currently has 23 students, built out, mind you. People were there, not going to be a lot of movement probably, but it goes from 23 students today to 60 students four years from now. I'd like to bet on that one not happening. But anyway, you know, but there's probably a balance somewhere else. But that doesn't help the people that are in the one that's over-projected, because they may have to move somewhere else to help fill numbers that aren't necessary. So anyway, does anybody else want to, you know, say, I think this has been a very productive discussion. You know, do we want to ask the consultant to bring anything in particular? Do we want to give some direction at this point?
Bring the tool.
Yes, to give the, to give the example.
I think your example of people living across the school, going far away, is what they need. We're talking really in great generality. We're at the point where they're going to change their plan. I would hope to send you a real good specifics of concerns that you have. So if they have the tool, and they should start working on it, because it's only February 2nd, you know. And we're, and if we do a Plan C, and D, we cannot kid ourselves, there's a high probability you're going to be impacting families that are not impacted today. And they have the right to also now voice their concern, or chime in. So I'm just asking, on Saturday, we have three hours with them, to be as specific as possible of your concerns, so they could address it, you know, sooner than later.
Could we ask, and I hate to do this, and I assume there's going to be some kind of comp time or overtime, but could we have transportation there? Because I think transportation is a very important issue that's come up for all of us. Because it's not just, you know, how many miles it is from home to the school, it's what road they're on, or what's under construction, or, you know, what, where do they have to backtrack? So I think that would be helpful to, you know, help us go through. Is there any, anybody else want anything to be brought for us?
Do we need to prioritize any of them, and then have them run something before, and bring it on Saturday on Plan A and Plan B?
Well, it.
Like change, have the top three?
At this point, we can, we can have discussion. We can't make any decisions, because we're in a work session. Now, perhaps we might want to announce a special call meeting at the end of the work session, if we do want to make some decisions, and give very specific direction to the board. So I think that might be wise, if we decide we don't need to have it, we don't have to. So we will schedule the work session to begin at nine, a special call meeting with the topic of the redistricting, to immediately follow that work session, to be followed by another work session on the budget. I guess we better plan on either going out for lunch, or bringing it in.
I was just going to say, are we going to be fed?
Yes.
Wow, that's very special. Very special.
All right, but.
Madam Chair, I just, I do have one question process, again. Will, so they'll bring the tool, and will we be able to make on-the-spot inputs to the tool, and have them spit out percentages? Arkbridge?
Yeah.
Ms., Freddie?
Yeah?
Hey, will you be, will you be able to bring the tool and do on-the-spot corrections to the tool? To, and give us percentages for APUs?
A copy of the data. Make a copy, and bring a copy of the data, not the real data.
What are you, what are you talking about?
One at a time. Let him finish.
You know, you get your question.
No, you go ahead. Ms. McOscar, you finish yours, and then you can go.
Ma'am, will you have the computer software with you, so we can make on-the-spot corrections to APUs?
I can, I will bring the tool. I can show you. I can show you the numbers. Yeah, I can do that.
Okay. We would like that.
But I can do it as a demonstration, and then whatever you would like, we can go back, do the numbers, and give them back to you.
Scott Haran's going to say something now.
He doesn't look happy.
Well, I want to make sure the board understands, she will not be able to make a change in the plan that will affect the entire plan. She can make a change to a certain attendance zone, and then they have to manually see how that works across 17 elementary school attendance zones. So it won't be push one button, and all of a sudden, brrr, all the numbers change, all the percentages change in real time for you to see. They cannot do that, that, okay, on the tool. They cannot do that. But I'll let her speak for herself.
Okay, well, real quick. Mr. Haran, before you go, can I, can I just ask that, I mean, they've got all of the input from all of the citizens, including any 2.0s, any, anything. They have all of the input from all of the board members. Can we send them back to the drawing board and ask them to assess this data, come back to us with a, with a plan that fits more closely to what we've asked for now, considering feeder patterns, driving the roads, traffic patterns, all of the things that we have just collected, and what they've read? And when they are ready, bring it back to us, and let us then look at what they have processed, or figured out from all of this. Because it doesn't make any sense to sit around on Saturday and have this same conversation, and play with APUs, and say Garrisonville, no, no Ferry Farm, and we don't want to get into that. So can we just ask them to go back to the drawing board with the information they now have? I am yelling, so that you can hear me. I'm not trying to be, like, boisterous.
Did you just?
Can we, can we ask them to go back to the drawing board and bring us? And if, and if Saturday is not enough time, we know that we have to make a decision in two weeks, but if Saturday is not enough time.
No, 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 we don't have to make a decision in two weeks.
I'm sorry, sorry.
You have to middle march, in my opinion.
Okay. If, if Saturday is not enough time for them to do so, well, we've got plenty of other things to do on Saturday.
Right, Ms. Hazard.
I would like to have the consultant reply, and it can come later, about the visually, or conceptually different way of doing it from school out.
A radius.
Yeah. And if, in the end, they say, that doesn't work, I can live with that, but that would be a request I would have, or at least some analysis of a report back on Saturday, whether that's, doesn't work, it does work. Because to me, that may create itself a new plan.
Right. Turn the mic off.
Ms. Haley made a comment that I would maybe ask the board to think about, that maybe the 85%, we don't have to have standardization of 85%, because maybe the other requests you want to, and I don't know if this could even be possible, is just look at the families that are impacted today. Is there another plan with just those families? I'm trying to truthfully avoid other families being impacted. So is there a way of maybe reducing the number of families impacted, and just, or at least change it where it makes more sense, and not all of a sudden draw in more, more families? That's, just wondering if that could be something.
Well, that's one way to look at it, but I would also like to consider Ms. Hazard's suggestion, and I think that goes along with everyone's, you know, thinking about that. I think, I think Saturday is going to be our opportunity to talk with the consultant and give more of our thoughts. We've all said a lot tonight, but I know I have more to ask about. And there may be more people in the community between now and then, that now that they know this is all going to be, you know, under review and consideration, may, you know, get their thoughts in as well. And I, we've heard from a lot, you know, a lot of people, a lot of communities, but there may be, you know, some others. So, well, if we come Saturday, the consultant's going to be prepared to give us feedback. We can give more thoughts, and then we can, you know, talk about where we want to go to proceed. But if there is a possibility, Arkbridge, that you can look at what Ms. Hazard's, you know, discussing, and I don't, is there any objection on the board to that? To starting at a school and, you know, going out in a radius?
Did you ask if it's doable?
Well, anything is doable.
Didn't I say doable in terms of time, effort, Matt?
Matt and Scott aren't doing this. This is what we have engaged the consultant to do.
No, 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 no.
I would, I would say, if you're asking Arkbridge to do that, give them some criteria as to a radius. Because we know we can't change the geographic location of our schools. Some schools are very close to each other, and some are not. And so then, some of the dense areas, up around Park Ridge, Hampton Oaks, Conway, Grafton, those close schools are very close. So if you say a mile radius, you know, to start with, and use that, some are going to overlap, if you're kind of looking at it from a visual. So I would say, if you're going to ask them to try to do a product for Saturday, under those kind of criterias, let's give them a few, a few more things to build on.
Well, I think they need to come to us, because exactly as you said, you know, where there's dense schools, the radius is going to be smaller. Where a school is more isolated, the radius is going to be bigger.
That's why I'm saying, if you are expecting them to bring something on Saturday, you're sending them with homework, they don't have anything to go on, so they.
Common sense.
That's, they're.
At least, we have, we have given, we have given the concept, in my opinion, and I will await if they say, I want more guidance from it. But at least it gives, I believe, the consultant something to think about until we get back on Saturday. And if they say, gosh, this makes sense, we could run it, and if they have more questions for us, it's a perfect time for us to dialogue.
I second that. Budget.
Is it before or after?
Are we adjourned?
Yes, all right. Any objections to adjourning?
Adjourned.
We're done.
Thank you for tonight.